Tony, what do you think?
I have several online. I'm counting them up now.
Okay, we got three present here.
Yeah, we've got seven.
All right, we'll give it a run. Let's call roll.
Jimenez? Morales?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Roscoe?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Esparza? Arenas? Foley?
Here.
Mahan?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Lucardo?
Present. All right, welcome everybody. We'll jump right into the evening agenda. Item 10.2 is a special use permit tentative map for the site at 1065 South Winchester Boulevard. I believe the rules are going to be, we'll hear first from staff, then the applicant for five minutes. Is that right? All right, great. Robert, Chris, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Robert Manford, Deputy Director for Planning. And with me here is Chris Burton, Director for Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. The item before you is an application for a special use permit to allow the demolition of existing residence, barn, and accessory buildings, removal of 30 ordnance-sized and 19 non-ordnance-sized trees, and construction of a six-story mixed-use building consisting of 70 residential condominium units, nine commercial condominiums, including 20,410 square feet of commercial space with one podium parking level and one basement parking level and associated landscaping amenities. The project also includes a tentative map to subdivide one lot with up to 70 residential condominiums and up to nine commercial condominium units on an approximately 0.93 gross acre for the mixed-use development. The site address is 1065 South Winchester Boulevard, and the area is 0.9 gross acres. The existing use is residential, and the general plan land use designation makes this commercial and Winchester Boulevard urban village. The zoning district is CP with its commercial pedestrian. An environmental impact report was prepared for the project, and it identified a significant and unavoidable impact for projects and cumulative impact to historic resources, which includes the entire property and structures at the 1065 South Winchester Boulevard. The other environmental issue areas were identified to be less than significant with mitigation. The EIR was publicly circulated for 45 days from February 7th to April 4th, 2022. Five comments were received, and no comment would warrant recollection of the draft EIR. This one to CEQA guidelines, Section 150885A. Staff has three recommendations from you. That also came from the planning commission. First is to adopt a resolution certifying the environmental impact report prepared for the project and make certain findings concerning significant impact mitigation measures and alternatives and adapting a statement of overriding consideration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, all in accordance with CEQA. The second recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving subject to conditions, a tentative map to subdivide one lot with up to 70 residential condominium units, nine commercial condominium units, in one common area on the approximately 0.9 gross acre site. The third recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving subject to conditions, the special use permits to allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence, barn, and accessory building, removal of 30 ordnance-sized and 19 non-ordnance-sized trees, construction of a six-story mixed-use building consisting of up to 70 residential condominium units, nine commercial condominiums, and approximately 20,410 square feet of commercial space with one podium parking level and one underground parking level and associated landscaping amenities. I would also like to acknowledge that the planning commission included a friendly reminder, a friendly amendment for purposes of the historic preservation. I also would like to acknowledge the memo from the Vice Mayor, which has the same purpose. This concludes staff presentation, and we are here in case you have any questions.
Thank you, Robert. All right, we'll go to the applicant. Welcome, Henry.
Hi, Henry. We've been working on this project for 19 months, so we're happy to be here today to kind of wrap it up and hopefully get your acceptance of the recommendation of staff. Just a side note, many of us in the community would like to see a condensed process, as you know. We do thank staff for their perseverance in working with us over time. With regard to the historic items on the site, we will be working with both the PAC San Jose and History San Jose to see if there's an opportunity to move any of the buildings on the site. I'm available for any questions, if you have one.
Okay, thanks, Henry. We'll come right back to you on that. Let's go to the public, and then we'll come back to council.
Caller 1324?
Paul's looking from the horse sheet. Sarah Winchester. That's how we're grounded talking about. Sarah Winchester built that house with her money. However, it was actually built by the spirits of the Native Americans whose lives were taken as a result of the manufacture of that weapon. That needs to be highlighted here, because that's what we're talking about. Okay, and this is my history. This is what I'm connected to. Because what built that house is the spirits of my ancestors. So I would suggest you be very, very, very careful about the way you move in this area, because it's still a redlined area. You see, that healing that is necessary from past land use policies, it still reeks of racism, and that's never been amended. It's never talked about within the context of these land use issues. And now you're kind of delicately dancing around this issue with respect to Winchester Boulevard. Okay, and so as an ancestor of the people that that life were murdered and that built that house, I'm asking that you do work with PAC. PAC is an excellent organization that continues to hold the proper reverence for the architecture in the city and preserving it for posterity. So I'm asking you just be very, very careful in the way that you move in that area. Thank you.
Paul Bohem?
Hello, I am Paul Bain, Chair of the Historic Landmarks Commission. But I speak to you today of, as a private citizen of San Jose, I realize that the council must weigh many factors in deciding whether to accept delay or reject the EIR certification. There is dollars and cents, there's living conditions, there's water, parking, parks and recreation. But I would urge you to consider one factor that is often forgotten, and that is our heritage. I'm going to urge you to delay the EIR certification so that the historic buildings, the farmhouse, Victorian, and the barn would be preserved, either preferably onsite, which a memo by Mike Sotegren sent to you today justifies and explains, or as Vice Mayor Jones' proposal to move it to History San Jose. A demolition of an eligible landmark is truly destruction of our heritage, something that cannot be repaired or replaced. Thank you for your consideration of my remarks and for your careful planning, because your decision, whatever you decide, will chart a course to our city's future. Thank you.
Wang?
Hi, good evening, City Council member. My name is Wang Tam from Carpenter Union Local 405. Four thing I would like to say tonight is local hiring. This project is really important for the community. So local hiring is really important for the people can live in here and work in here, reducing the traffic and greenhouse gases. So other thing is appendices program, so such as I've been a carpenter for 20 years. So I would love to see the community hiring more appendices to build the city better. And then other thing is healthcare benefit. I hope developer can provide all these healthcare benefit, not even just only me, is helping my family also, my kid, and preventive wages. So such as tough day right now, you know, everybody hard to living without a little money. So I hope city member can prove this with our carpenter labor standards. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Mike? Mike Sotegren?
Thank you. Hello, this is Mike Sotegren with PAC San Jose. Thank you, Vice Mayor Jones, for your memo to council. Should council make a final determination today and all three resolutions, I hope your recommendations will be supported. Please refer to the two illustrations that I sent in the email earlier today for my following comments. PAC says it recommends that the council defer its decision on the certification of certification of the EIR and demolition, but not the subdivision. It is in all parties' best interest to support a fast-track preservation initiative that potentially eliminates PAC San Jose's opposition to the resolutions as currently described. While PAC and the city's HLC would clearly prefer the historic buildings retained in their current location, we have just become aware of a specific opportunity for preservation of the historic building via offsite relocation. PAC requests that the city formally encourage the developer to support efforts by PAC San Jose, History San Jose, and others to realize an offsite preservation option as possible receiver site is none other than San Jose's History Park. PAC asked the council to take into full account that the structures on the project side are eligible city-state national landmarks via multiple criterion, including the association with fruit growing and drying industry examples of the early 1900s Italian-style Victorian cottages and California-style barns. A certification of the EIR will be challenged based on staff's acceptance of the developer's assertion that the project objectives cannot be fully met while preserving and integrating some of the most significant buildings within the project. The satellite view shows how the historic buildings could in fact be preserved on site without significant or loss of the programs programming objectives.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right, Vice Mayor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this has been an interesting project, because if you actually see the site, it is pretty unique in terms of this barn and other historic buildings that are in the middle of this urban area. So it's a very unique opportunity to bring the different stakeholders together. So we were able to bring the developers, well as San Jose Preservation Action Council San Jose, as well as History San Jose, to come together. And for some, you know, the ideal solution would have been to keep the structures in the existing location. But we're developing, we're growing as a city, and it is part of our urban village. So I think I'm really excited about the fact that we were able to come to a meeting of the minds in terms of being able to preserve these historic buildings as well as move forward with developments. I am a little disappointed in the project, though, in terms of we have a desire on all projects in our district to have affordable housing built in as a component of the project. The developer had the right to just write a check and not build out affordable housing. But every time one of these projects comes before us, it's really a missed opportunity to have more affordable housing come to my district. Henry, I want to actually ask you to come up. I just have one quick question for you.
Is that Henry or?
Henry.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting hard of hearing, Kevin.
Hey, I'm not too far behind you, so don't worry about it. I know that you're in agreement with the direction in my memo, but there's also been a discussion in terms of providing 60 days for History San Jose and the Preservation Action Council San Jose to relocate the structure.
The current resolution is for 30 days of advertising, which is fine. And then we would extend that 60 more days. That's acceptable. We're having a working relationship with the preservation community, so that's acceptable.
Okay, so a total of 90 days?
Correct.
30 days of advertisement, 60 days of actual implementation of the move.
Correct.
So you're in agreement and supportive of that?
Sorry, Kevin, what?
I said you're, just for the record, so you're in agreement and supportive of that 90-day window?
Yes. The only qualification I would make is that we'll make every effort to be successful, but there's always the opportunity of failure. So we'll go to 90 days.
Failure is always, you know, a possibility.
I mean, if we're on the verge of getting it done, then that's not an issue.
That's exactly where I was going.
Right.
And you're two steps ahead of me, so.
Right.
Even if you're coming up on the 90 days and you're close and it looks like it's going to happen.
Correct.
And I'm not, you know, I can't hold you to this, but I just, it would give us the comfort level to know that you would be flexible in making sure that it happens if it's.
We'd probably hire you as a consultant to get it done.
Actually, I know you're joking. I just want to put on the record that that was a joke, and Henry was laughing. Just to make sure our lawyers back down. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
And I want to thank you, Sam, too, for having that on the record. Okay, so just before I make the motion, I want to just ask someone from PAC SJ or History San Jose if they're in alignment with that discussion.
Not sure if there's anyone here. Is there someone online? Is that Mike or?
I have Mike.
Mike?
Mike Sotegren?
Yeah, I just, he can speak now.
Yes, what was the question, please?
So the question was that I just talked to Henry, and he said he would support having a 30-day marketing window and then a 60-day implementation window to relocate the structures. So a total of 90 days. I just want to just confirm with you that that's acceptable.
You know, I would defer to planning, but I thought what the offer was was a 60-day advertisement and a total of 90 days, but I may have misunderstood that.
60 days advertisement, 30 days implementation?
That was what was offered, I believe, at the planning commission by the applicant.
Okay, it seems to me that 30 days advertisement, which can, there's no reason for the advertisement to stop after 30 days. It seems to me that 30 days advertisement, 60-day implementation is actually a better scenario.
Would be simpler simply to say 90 days.
I would appreciate 90 days if the applicant is willing.
I don't know what the implications are of simply the shorthand, but.
Yeah, that sounds like a great solution to me, Mayor. Henry, I kind of feel bad, but can I call you up one more time?
Vice Mayor, this is Robert Manford. 90 days total is consistent with precedence.
Okay. The discussion is, instead of having a 30-day marketing window and a 60-day implementation window, just to say 90 days and just leave it at that. Is that acceptable?
What, right now, and Robert can correct me, the resolution calls for a 30-day advertisement.
That is correct.
And we're acceptable to that. If you want to remove that and have 90 days just for History San Jose to look at it, that's okay with us, too.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I'm from sales, and I learned not to talk past the clothes. So I'm going to make a motion to accept my memo and also make one modification that there's a 90-day window for History San Jose and Preservation Action Council of San Jose to be able to implement the move of the structures. That's my motion.
Motion, is there a second? I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Second. All right, let's go to questions from the council. Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, this is just a question for Robert, I think, or Chris, or maybe a comment, too. I see in every one of these, I always see that the approval is for removal of trees and never it really includes in it what the mitigation. I know we have a standard mitigation with 3X or something, but what I'd like to see, maybe I'm asking for future reference, to have things come back and have in the actual action whatever the mitigation is so that we see what the net would be to the city as a result of the entire moving forward with the project. Because it always just looks like we're saying, let's just take down trees. We never see the alternative. So what is the mitigation in this case, just to clarify?
The tree ordinance actually requires replacement.
So it's a one-to-one replacement or was it still three-to-one replacement, right?
I have to check the details, but sometimes it's one-one, sometimes it's four-to-one.
Okay, okay.
If it's onsite, it's one-to-one, and if it's offsite, it's more than that.
So we don't know on this, you don't know off the top of your head on this project what the mitigation will be? what the mitigation will be? That's why I'm, maybe in future, if we can have that as part of the action so we can see what the net is on the project as we're taking action, that would be helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any other hands up, so let's vote on the motion from the Vice Mayor.
Paralas.
Yes.
Cohen.
Hi.
Roscoe.
Hi.
Davis.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Liccardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, final item for tonight is the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement with Jackson Taylor Partners LLC for the Japantown Corporation Yard Redevelopment Project, Item 10.3. Welcome Nancy and team.
I'm Nancy Klein, Director of Economic.
Nancy, could you pull that mic a little closer?
Thank you. Director of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, and I'm here with Yan Buoy and Kevin Ice from Real Estate, as well as Cameron Day from the City Attorney's Office. With us also are key project stakeholders, Wiza Uimura from Taiko, Connie Martinez from SV Creates, and Sean McEaren from Shea Development, and they will speak before we conclude our presentation. They'll be part of the presentation. Tonight, I'm very, very happy to share a little bit of history and some gratitude. First, for history, this particular piece of land has a deep and rich history, and tonight we're just going back to 2004, when this project began. Our own Kip Harkness, who I'm glad is here tonight, was the redevelopment agency's project lead, and after 75 meetings, Kip and the community emerged, which was a lot back then, Kip and the community emerged with a framework, and the goal was to accomplish a great, good place for families, children, seniors with art and culture. It's taken 18 years, but now 536 units of housing have been completed, 100 of which units have been leased in about three months' time. A .75-acre park is under development, and the park will have art and artifacts. Before you tonight is one more component with a key heart. The last component will add 65 more units of housing, and critically, a permanent home for Taiko. Our own national treasure will be the heart of the project and the heartbeat of the community. Now, a little gratitude. I want to thank then-councilmember Liccardo, then-Mayor Liccardo, and councilmember Paralas, and their respective councils for the vision, commitment, and staying power to see this project through. A great deal of thanks goes to Sean McEaren of Shea Development, who navigated deftly economic cycles and much more. Many thanks to Connie Martinez and Alexandra Urbanowski, who helped birth the idea of a home for Taiko and the arts groups that is financially sustainable so that they can flourish. Of course, thanks to Taiko's leadership, Roy, PJ, and Wiza, for their spirit, excellence, talent, and tenacity, and to the staffs of Planning Building, Department of Transportation, Public Works, and Fire Department for all their work. And many, many thanks as well to the Japantown Community Congress and the Japantown Neighbors. Yan Buoy will now provide key project details.
My name is Yan Buoy. I'm a Senior Executive Analyst with the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. The assignment of the Development Agreement with Shea Properties was signed in November 2017 for the construction of 425 to 600 residential units on Jackson Avenue and North 7th Street. Approximately 536 units have already been constructed. The .75-acre park is currently under construction. The site reserved for the Creative Center of the Arts was originally intended to be a 40,000 to 50,000 square feet building to permanently, permanently house San Jose Taiko and many other arts organizations. Given the economic impacts due to COVID-19, that project was unfortunately found to be unfeasible. Thanks to the creativity and generosity of Silicon Valley Creates, Shea Properties, several, several other arts groups, and the city, we were all able to work together to reimagine the project to make it a reality. The Third Amendment will allow Shea to receive the property from the city and construct the Creative Center of the Arts at its own cost. The center will be approximately 12,000 square feet with office spaces for groups such as the Red Ladder Theater Company and Taiko Peace, and a practice space for San Jose Taiko. The city will receive a 65-year ground lease from Shea for the space. The city will then lease the space to Silicon Valley Creates as the master tenant, who will sublease to a variety of local arts and community nonprofit groups. This is a current aerial view of the progress at the site, and this is a rendering of the Creative Center view from the park. And with that, I'll turn it back to Nancy.
We'd like very much if Wiza Uimura could come and share a few words.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members and City Staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Wiza Uimura, Executive Director and Performer for San Jose Taiko, a 50-year-old nonprofit performing company and school, featuring the ensemble performance of the Taiko, or Japanese drum. As one of the oldest and most active arts and cultural groups in the city of San Jose, we reach over 50,000 people annually through our performances and classes, taking the name of San Jose to diverse locations across the United States and world, helping to establish San Jose as a destination. San Jose Taiko is the top professional Taiko group in the US and an artistic voice for Japanese and Asian-Americans. Launched in 1973, we were the third Taiko group to form outside of Japan and have been a pioneer in Taiko fostering a community that now boasts more than 400 groups across North America. In addition, we have been the vanguard of the multicultural arts sector in this region, advocating for and supporting the explosive growth of the arts organizations representing communities of color. Having started in San Jose Japantown, one of only three Japantowns remaining in the US, San Jose Taiko has remained committed to supporting its vibrancy and sustainability. For nearly 30 years, the Japantown community has been an active voice for the development of this property. Back in 2006, as was mentioned, during a prior iteration of this development, the city, developer, and Japantown community established seven priorities, including a Japantown home for San Jose Taiko in recognition of our work as markers, keepers, and placemakers of this special neighborhood. In our 50-year history, we have had to move our class or rehearsal studio 16 times, with each of those moves disrupting our services and draining limited resources. Having a permanent space to hold our multitude of classes, run rehearsals of our world-class performing company, and to house our administrative offices will mean stability and opportunity for our organization's next half-century. We are confident in the partnership developed between the City of San Jose's Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, Shea Properties, SV Creates, and San Jose Taiko. They have proven their desire to work with the Japantown community to build an iconic project that will speak of this unique community's history, present, and future. We hope that you all, as Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, recognize the value of our efforts as cultural ambassadors of both the City of San Jose and specifically San Jose Japantown by providing us with a permanent home within the Sixth and Jackson Development. San Jose Taiko asks that you approve the recommended ordinance and resolution before you tonight. Thank you.
Connie Martinez?
This is an exciting day for my organization, SV Creates. Did I need to say my name? Connie Martinez. Okay. So for my organization, SV Creates, for San Jose Taiko, for the Japantown community, the arts community, and really our community in general. Nancy stole many of my lines, but I will add to it. We are extremely proud and excited to be partners with San Jose Taiko and the Japantown community. We care deeply about sustainable operating models, and we believe we have that in this project because of the partnerships in place. We care as much about the sustainability and the operating models as we do the building itself. And so we stand here committed to sustaining that model and creating spaces for the arts. We believe that this is a model for the city to consider for future developments that will help sustain and grow our arts community and the value it brings to our community. I can't thank Sean and his team, Wiza and her team, Nancy and your team enough. You know, persistence does pay off. At least we hope it does, and we hear that tonight. Let's see, have I forgotten anything? Oh, you know, I don't know if you remember the phone call you made to me, Mayor Liccardo, I guess it was over 10 years ago when we first talked about this spot. So you've been there by our, by our side, as Raoul Paralas, council member, has been as well, so we appreciate your collaborative leadership and support and guidance. And of course, I'd be remiss not to thank, as Nancy did, Alexandra Urbanowski, who's really led the charge for our SV Creates team. So let's get it done.
Thank you, Connie. Sean McEaren with Shea Development.
Honorable Mayor, Council Members, I'm Sean McEaren with Shea Properties. I'm thrilled to be here tonight. This is a key first step, as many of the folks before me have said much more eloquently than I will. But we are, we are so proud to be here and working on this final piece of the Japantown project. We call it Sixth and Jackson. The two residential buildings are mostly complete at this point. The park is really taking shape. I know a lot of you guys drive by, see this project frequently. Within the next couple of months, you're going to start seeing the artistic elements and the park take shape. We have a beautiful 18-foot art piece that's going to be installed in March. I know everyone's very excited for that. We've been working hard for the last two years just on this project, and that pales in comparison to what I hear when people are talking about 18 and nearly 20 years working on this project, but working with the economic development team, Nancy, Kevin, and Yan, with SV Creates, Connie and Alexandra, and with Taiko, Wiza, and Roy, and many, many others. You could, you could fill this room with community supporters for this project, and the key element that the community loves to see is the park, the completion of the CCA project, and the retail along, along Jackson Street. We now have a project outline that we view as feasible and sustainable, delivering the key elements, most notably the permanent home for Taiko. We will be back, but this is a key first step, and we appreciate your support tonight. Thank you.
And with that, staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks to everybody. I'll chime in with my thanks just after Councilmember Paralas jumps in. Councilmember?
Yes.
Oh, we're going to go to the public? I'm sorry, let's go to the public first. Hang on there, Councilmember. I'll come right back to you.
Sounds good.
You got, you got some things going on over there.
I have Henry, Victoria, and Roy. If you want to come down and come down to the microphone, and if you've changed your mind, you don't have to come down, but in person again, that's Henry, Victoria, and Roy. And then I have hands up online as well.
Okay, great, thanks. Hi, Victoria, good to see you again.
Honorable Mayor Sam Liccardo, Councilmember Raoul Paralas, Councilmembers and City Staff, my name is Victoria Tequeta. I'm a board member of the Japantown Community Congress for the past 17, 18 years. I'm here to seek your support to approve the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement with Jackson Taylor Partner LLC that's before you. Your yes vote will continue this planned development onto the last component to complete the courtyard development site and the site to house our arts community, San Jose Taiko and SV Creates. Your yes vote will honor the incredible work of the past 18 years and the countless hours spent by the Japantown Community Congress, the Japantown stakeholders, the developer, city staff, and neighborhood residents to develop the courtyard site and secure a home for our arts community. The Jackson Taylor Master Plan 30 years ago in its development heard from the surrounding neighborhood leaders and residents who voiced their concerns that gentrification would affect our arts community from continued residency in the Japantown area. So today, your approval will support long-held notions that, one, that we in San Jose value the arts and in turn, the arts will enrich our life. Number two, San Jose seeks to house the arts in our community when opportunities like these unique partnerships like we have today presents themselves. I ask you to vote yes on this long-awaited courtyard development to house San Jose Taiko and SV Create. The vote will meet the seven guiding principles put forth by the Japantown Community Congress in its mission to preserve San Jose Japantown, one of the three remaining Japantowns in California. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mayor Liccardo, Councilmembers, my name is Roy Hidobayashi. I'm a co-founder of San Jose Taiko. I'm also a board member of the Japantown Community Congress, but currently I also work at the School of Arts and Culture at the Mexican Heritage Plaza. I lead the Multicultural Arts Leadership Institute under Program Director for that program. I just want to be brief. Basically, thank you to everyone that's really supported this project all along. I've been really working and looking at the courtyard as a home for San Jose Taiko since it first was, came available when the, when the courtyard actually moved off, and that was in, I believe, almost 32 years ago, in 1990, when that happened. So it's been a long time. We should mention that we've moved the group about 16 times over the years in order to find rehearsal space. I would have to say that I managed 15 of those moves, so I really don't want to help manage another big one after this one, so I'm looking forward to having a permanent home in Japantown, which is what we've really been wanting all along in our 50-year history. PJ and I are celebrating 50 years of playing Taiko next year, and we hope that part of that will be celebrating moving into new space shortly after that, too. So thank you to everybody again, all your support for the many years. Thank you to staff for all your help, and actually Connie Martinez and Alexandra SV Creates, and actually the staff from San Jose Taiko, Wiza, and Franco, and everybody else. So thank you very much.
Sorry. Paul?
Yes, Paul Sotter from the Horseshoe. I'd first like to acknowledge Norman Minetta, because Norman Minetta, many, many years ago, walked into the processing center at San Jose State University with a bat in his hand, and they took that bat from him, and that was the only thing that he had, the way, the way that he related to American culture and American society, he loved baseball. And we've come a long way from the time that Norman Minetta walked into that processing center at San Jose State University to where we are today. And so I think it's critically important that we acknowledge Norman Minetta's work and the many typical ways in which we still today are reverberating with the frequency that he set out when he became mayor of the city. And so I'd like to congratulate and actually state my envy of the Japanese community, because you have been able to establish yourself as a cultural center and have been able to give, be given the respect of this city and to honor the. and to honor the importance of the performing and cultural and visual arts. And that is very, very important, because that is how we convey the values and the traditions of our people. You know, and there are times when I wish that we would, that we as Chicanos would be acknowledged as Chicanos, because that's who we are. We're not people of color. You know, and you are recognized and acknowledged as Japanese, because that is who you are. We are not. We are not acknowledged who we are. We're called people of color, communities of color. And that is a white supremacist way of conveying that we are still classified by color. I'm not a person of color. I am a Chican, just as you are a Japanese.
Back to council?
All right, Councilmember Peralas.
Okay, same spot, we're here. Well, first off, I apologize. Couldn't be there in person with Wisa, Connie, and Sean. So figured I'd at least give a little taste of the kid here at home. But it's a pleasure. Yes, yes, she, she, this is Sophia.
Oh, forgive me. Oh, this is your younger, okay.
This is the youngest one. Yeah, Jorge's already four. He's all over the place. But, you know, we actually live walking distance from this project, and I've walked my daughter down there a couple of times. And so I've seen the progress. I've been looking forward to the park coming online. And this Creative Center for the Arts is just, you know, really going to be a tremendous opportunity, as you've already heard from our community members, for Taiko especially, as well as such a stakeholder in Japantown. And so, but I just wanted to be able to say thank you. We wrote a little bit in the memo there, but there's really so much that goes into this project, as the mayor knows, having worked on it, and it's gone through so many iterations. Thank you to Shea Properties for making this possible when we thought maybe through the pandemic, you know, we would lose this opportunity. I'm glad that we were able to find an outcome, Nancy. Thank you as well to your team. Appreciate it and look forward to this now, seeing this next part, not only the park getting built, but the Center for the Arts, being able to see this get built up over the next year and look forward to going there for many, many years to come. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation, which is my memo as well, but nothing different there in the memo, just the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralas.
Second.
All right. Are there comments or questions? I just wanted to go in with my thanks as well. We've all had a lot of history with this, but I know this project goes well beyond my history with it. But many of the wonderful people you see tonight, I actually met for the first time, participating one way or another in one of these community meetings, as I think about Roy and PJ Hidobayashi, and Victoria Tequeta, and I think Kip as well, probably. It is wonderful to see us reach this point. We're culminating now with something that's really beautiful and grand that I know the community is embracing and will cherish. I am seeing it already. At least the project around it is clearly almost all built out, and I know a lot of people are excited about that. And an awful lot of folks are excited to see human beings filling all those apartments so that we can continue to add to the vitality of Japantown. So thank you, Sean, and you and your team for your investment in our community. I know that Connie Martinez said the word persistence, and I actually wrote the word perseverance down, because I was going to mention that we should nominate Connie for a Nobel Prize for perseverance for all of this. So I wanted to say thank you to you, Connie and Alexandra, for sticking through it all. There were multiple iterations. I know there was a Plan A and other plans as well. And financially, all those plans are hard to make work, I think, with a lot of really creative work and the leadership of the people who were here. And I want to thank certainly Nancy and Kevin and Yen and everyone who's been working so hard on this, that what we've come up with, I think, is something that's a real win-win for the community. It's always good to have more housing. It's more than anything, I think, the community is really pined to have a permanent home for San Jose Taiko. And congratulations to Roy and PJ on what will be 50 years. I know you guys were like three years old when you started this. It's really impressive. And thank you for your leadership, Wisa, and continuing the great tradition at San Jose Taiko. Yeah, so anyway, this is, it's wonderful to see this, to come to some culmination. I've been sort of a cheerleader for this project for 16 years, and I'm just happy to see this come to life. And it really has, because of the amazing work of a lot of community members who are so deeply invested in what happens in our city. And so it's a great win for San Jose. So thank you all for your hard work. All right, are there any other questions or comments? Let's vote.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhem?
Aye.
Thank you. Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye. Okay. So it is. Thank you, congratulations, everyone. So we're ending the meeting on an up note. We do have?
Open forums.
Open forums, let's go to open forum.
Paul?
Yes, Paul Sutcliffe from the Horseshoe. I'd like to acknowledge PAC for the work, the Preservation Action Council, for the work that they do in the city. In fact, the building that's going to go up right there on Reed Street would not be possible without the work of the Preservation Action Committee. I've seen their work over the past few years, and I respect it. There's a great degree of integrity in the way that they go about preserving the history of San Jose through architecture. And what I don't want to see is this city use that committee in order to facilitate the gentrification process, because that's what we're under right now. We're under a very, very critical paradigm shift in terms of population and economics and culture, which in turn is going to affect the politics. And so I just would hate to see this city use that, the integrity and the credibility that that organization has built up over time to facilitate developers in doing what it is that they want to do. You know, because that, to me, is a violation of the very code of conduct and ethics that you guys like use, you know, a bunch of lawyerly words, but have no really backing, no action behind it. You don't even back it up. You just sit there and you smile and you use lawyers in order to use rhetoric, in order to do your bidding, because you have no bidding of your own. And so I would just hate to see you continue to do that. So I have to say.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman. I haven't been able to do it too much this fall, but I wanted to try to fit in some of the long-term legacy items that with four council and the mayor leaving, councilpersons and the mayor leaving, that I hope that their projects and work can be remembered and we can continue their good efforts. In District One, Chaffey Jones District, I really hope that, you know, the future of the, there's buildings that you want to build, housing for the future of the area that can be affordable housing, really affordable, with possibly less transportation, with less single occupancy vehicle cars in the area and more of reliance on transportation. Good luck in those efforts, what that may develop into our future. To Councilperson Carrasco, good luck on elderly issues and how we can really work on these trying different ways to, what can be long-term help for elderly issues in District Five that can be on par with the rest of the city of San Jose. The Councilperson Peralas, his issues, I really hope he's had some really good ideas in the future of city-sponsored encampments and the overall concepts of how to really help homeless in San Jose. I hope his work can be a continuing good effort we'll all want to work on. And I guess that leaves the mayor. I hope his efforts, he talked a lot about technology innovation, yet actually, it's city government staff and civic innovation. They're considering how to better connect with community and how it can be more of a community process in the future. I really hope that can be a really important long-term legacy of the mayor that we'll all much respect, that he took the time and due diligence to at least offer that function that I think can be a long-lasting purpose. Thank you.
Mike Sottergren?
Yes, thank you. Two things. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge the work that's done every day out of sight by the Office of Economic Development, specifically Nancy Klein, Kevin. And I just wanted to express my appreciation for that. Even when I don't like what I'm being told, I always know it's based on truth and integrity, and San Jose should be proud of its Office of Economic Development. I also wanted to just give a thank you to the Planning Director and Historic Preservation Officer for the recent off-site meeting that they held to try to help the cause of preservation without causing damage to Envision 2040 Goals goals. And specifically note two things that were brought up that were of great interest. The city of Los Angeles has an Adaptive Reuse Ordinance that helps developers to adapt historic buildings into existing new projects. It also emphasizes the importance of continuing to entomb greenhouse gases with projects that, you know, propose major demolitions. And so there were some inspiring things that came out of that